All right. Good evening, everybody. I have six o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order. If you would, please rise and recite your pledge of allegiance.
Our allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the great glory of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Mayor Zaring.
Present. Thank you. We have some ceremonial matters this evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for everybody coming out and being here this evening. This week is National Public Works Week, so I've got a proclamation for that. May 18th to the 24th of 2025 is that week. I can tell you, I've grown a fond appreciation for our public work since I've been sat here as an alderman five years ago, all the way to this day, that everybody that works in that department and all the work that goes in to keep our city running, it's amazing what, how much work goes into that. So this is your week, and we definitely do appreciate you. I can tell you that right now. So with that, Public Works, whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance, of vital importance, to sustainable and resilient communities, and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Harrisonville, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Harrisonville to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, be it now, therefore be it resolved, I, Mike Zaring, Mayor of City of Harrisonville, do hereby designate the week, May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week, and I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. All right. So get all of our Public Works folks come up here. I'm going to pass this off to you, and we got somebody that's getting a picture since down? Oh, there we go. Teresa. the 2024 Officer of the Year.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. This evening, I would like Sergeant Timothy Michelson to come up. He is Harrisonville Police Department's Employee of the Year for 2024. So the Police Department, every year identifies an Employee of the Year, and you are nominated by your peers. In 2024, Sergeant Michelson played a key role in the transition to the new CAD RMS system, Central Square. His involvement and commitment to the Harrisonville Police Department and other Cass County agencies were incredibly valuable. He put in a lot of hours developing the RMS portion of the system, carefully reviewing hundreds of records to make sure that old data was transferred accurately. He also created workflow programs, set up e-ticketing, and worked with the county jail to make the booking process of inmates smoother. As with any transition, there were flaws, but without Sergeant Michelson's hard work, expertise, and dedication, the report management system would not be running as efficiently as it is. He also assisted with other county agencies with their workflows and reports. All of this was managed while he was working his regular assignment, overtime hours, as well as additional tasks requested by him due to his willingness to assist and extensive knowledge in several areas. Sergeant Michelson has always shown a strong team-player attitude and continues to help make the new system succeed, which is why he has earned the title of Harrisonville Police Department's 2024 Employee of the Year by showing great dedication, a solid work ethic, and support for both the department and neighboring agencies. Sergeant Michelson, it is my honor to recognize you as Harrisonville Police Department's 2024 Employee of the Year.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say?
I would say I couldn't have done it without the rest of the team. Like she said it, I was basically in front of a computer for a year. So without the other people picking up the slack, I wouldn't have had time to do that. So I appreciate all of them, except Brian. Brian.
He looks a little bit happy now.
Yeah. Thank you all, and thank you all for your support of the Police Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all. Next up, we have, let's see. Next up, we have public participation, and we had four people fill out an agenda request, but I was told before the meeting, so I just needed to confirm. Joanna Brizendine.
She's passed.
She's passed. Okay. I just had to make sure we had that right. And then next up, we got Marcy Baumel. You can come on up, ma'am. Tell us your name and address. And if I am correct, you're going to also read what Elizabeth Korn was going, because she can't be here, right? Okay. All right. Perfect. So how this works, we're actually, the very last item we have on our agenda this evening is to finalize giving public participation five minutes instead of three minutes. We're going to honor the five minutes now, even though it hasn't officially passed yet. So we're going to give you five minutes. We'll time it, and we'll let you know when you're about a minute out, and 30 seconds. Thank you.
Press the button to let it go green.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Marcy Baumel, 1300 East Elm Street, Harrisonville, Missouri. And I'm here this evening representing Has Friends, the 501(c)(3) that partners with the Harrisonville Animal Shelter. And this is for the agenda item, Council Bill 20. Several months ago, this licensing issue came up when all the planning was taking place for the beginning of the 2005 Milwaukee Mall events and the Elks events. And it was kind of geared just toward hobby vendors at that time. And those vendor events are Has Friends' main source of fundraising. We also feature all of our holiday raffle items. The people that come up to us at those vendor events thank us for what we're doing for the animal shelter and how we've partnered with them, the donations that they give us, the business partners that we've made through us just being out in the public at those events. So my concern is that if situations continue and we can't kind of get this settled and it all calms down, then we're going to have so many vendors that will not want to participate in the Milwaukee Mall and the Elks Club events, to where perhaps there won't be enough participation to where we even are able to have them. In April, just recently, we figured there was 400 to 450 people that went through the event that day. The line for the Easter Bunny never ended. We also helped sponsor the Kids Zone that day, and the participation was unbelievable. I don't know that a non-cost or a no-cost license is the answer. I don't know for sure what, if that would have the city still meet all the requirements that they have to meet, both from the state and what you all have as in your ordinances and those types of things. So anyway, that's just kind of our concern with all this that's going on. Now, I was given this a few minutes ago. I have not had a chance to read it. I am just going to take it from the top, and I'm going to go with it. Liz is stuck in the traffic mess up in the city, and the flooding and the downpour. So this is from Liz Korn.
And I'm going to restart your time five minutes here. You did good. You got that all done in three minutes still. So.
School board. That's where you get that.
All right. Go ahead.
I would like to address the proposed requirement that all vendors obtain a business license from the City of Harrisonville for the Log Cabin Festival. The festival runs yearly for one and a half days in the fall and is the biggest fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce. The festival has had an exception in place for over 30 years exempting the vendors from this requirement. At the May meeting, the Board of Directors, at the May meeting of the Board of Directors, it was announced that the longstanding exception has been deemed illegal by the city's attorney and thus be removed. This will require all vendors to obtain a business license from the City of Harrisonville. It is my opinion that the removal of this exception will have an adverse effect on the festival. As a business owner in a similar situation in another city, I had a very negative reaction to being told that I would have to secure a business license. It wasn't the cost of the license, but rather all the perceived hoops that needed to be jumped, the annual renewals, the possible penalties for failure to renew the paperwork and red tape, among many other concerns that turned me off. It is my fear that the vendors for the festival will have a similar reaction and will choose not to participate. After all, it's only for a day and a half out of the year, and the hassle just isn't worth the time. This will cause a ripple effect. The vendors won't come. Attendance will drop. Funds will diminish, and the festival could potentially fade into nothingness. We can't afford that. It was also announced at the May Board Meeting that Bing, Executive Director of the Chamber, will track the effects of this new requirement. I imagine that if he reports in no change in participation, we will move on as if nothing ever happened. But what if he reports a reduced interest by vendors? What will we do if the vendors back out? If we see the festival begin to shrink, as I suspect that will happen, we will then reevaluate the decision to remove the business license exception. Will we bring the exception back? Will we find a loophole, another way to exempt the vendors for one and a half days out of the year? Or will we throw our hands up in the air and say, oh, well, let the festival die? We intend to look for a solution. If we intend to look for a solution to the problem in the future, then I am begging you to find the solution now, sooner, regular than, rather than later. Find the solution now before the problem becomes a reality, and we lose the biggest fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Since I was on the, since I passed, can I just add one little thing to that?
Sure.
That's not just for.
Could you step up? Because we've got some people online. That's okay.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
That's not just for the Log Cabin. I feel like a lot of people, a lot of the vendors, like at the Milwaukee Mall and the Elks Lodge and stuff like that, a lot of the vendors feel like if they only make like $200 out of the whole year, and then having to go through, Liz Korn said, well, you know, her saying, if they have to go through all of the red tape of the state and the county and then the city license, it doesn't really matter if the city license goes to, well, it does matter. It is nice to have it zero instead of $50. But that's not really the point. The point is, people, if they're just making a couple hundred dollars, they don't want to go through all of that red tape just for a little bit of extra money for Christmas. So that's what I think that also needs to be said, because it wouldn't just be the Log Cabin Festival that dies. It will be, Thursdays, it will be the, you know, like the, well, the Log Cabin Festival and Milwaukee Mall Festival, which she said had 400 to 450 people run through there. And that brought a lot of people to Harrisonville. And then all the other businesses around Harrisonville got additional, you know, revenue from that. And same with Elks Lodge. So, but that's just, that was my statement. I just wanted to add on, it's not just Log Cabin that may die. It may be all of the, you know, Thursdays, the Milwaukee Mall, and the, you know, Elks Lodge, and all of those depend on, all of those have causes like the Has Friends and Elks Lodge for the kids and, you know, all of that just brings in so much to Harrisonville. And we just don't want that to die.
Awesome. All right. Thank, could you go ahead and state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Address?
Name and address. Yep.
Joanna Brizendine, 1907 Parkwood Drive, Harrisonville, Missouri.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next up, agenda request is Ben Schimmelfinning. Bing.
Mayor, I have been asked this evening to pass on my comment, so that's what I'm going to do.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We will move on now to the approval of minutes. These were in your packet. It's for the Board of Aldermen Regular Meeting, May 5th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Alderman Chaney, with a second from Alderman Franklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Those stand. Next, we have the Board of Aldermen Work Session from May 5th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Milner, with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And those will stand. All right. Agenda items. First up is the second reading of Council Bill 19.
In ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, vacating a portion of the West Street right-of-way adjacent to lots 207 and 208 of Jackson's Edition, North Oak Street, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Christina?
Luckily, I get to keep this short, because we have not had any phone calls or emails or anything on this, so no new information.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions from the Board, Christina? Nope. All right. This is the second reading. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Got a motion from Alderman Chaney, with a second from Alderman Fauch. Roll call, please.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Council Bill 19 is now ordinance 3723. Next, we have the first reading of Council Bill 20.
In ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, establishing section 397.180 of the Harrisonville Municipal Code.
All right. Jeremy.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. For you tonight is the culmination of after much discussion at the work session prior to, in regards to business licensing, an effort to try to keep us in compliance with state law and as well as create a level playing field for all businesses across our, the city of Harrisonville, allowing the Board to set the fee for a mobile or temporary vendor within the city of Harrisonville.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Jeremy on that? All right. That will come back for a second reading at our June 2nd Board meeting. Thank you, Jeremy. Thanks. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing. I'm going to open a public hearing on rezoning from General Industrial M2 District to Single Family Resident R1 District for 1.5 acres located at 403 Locust Street. Christina, I think you're back up.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. So the proposal is from the applicant seeking approval for rezon of 1.5 acres from General Industrial M2 District to Single Family Residential R1 District. This purpose is to allow for the existing residents and to allow for a new single-family residential house to be constructed and the property to be split. The property is currently single-family residential, as is the property immediately to the west. Previous actions include the DuTros Edition being recorded with the county in 1912 as part of the original town plat, 1944 being when county shows the house and several other shed yard structures being built. September 20th, 1978, the Board of Aldermen approved zoning ordinance 1194, which established the area as General Industry M2 District at that time. March 7th of 2019, there was a building permit, 18299, that was issued for a 40-foot by 44-foot steel shop building. And then April 15th of 2019, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance 3464, vacating unused and unapproved Oak Street right-of-way, Buckeye Street right-of-way, and an alley remnant at 403 Locust Street, which is the property for the rezon. Within the analysis section of the staff report, there's a proposed rezoning subsection that briefly compares the dimensional standards for the M2 and R1 districts. In the comprehensive plan subsection, the area is identified as community mixed use. The first key priority within the community mixed use is supportive of this type, supportive of this proposed rezoning. It states integration of modernas and revamped residential uses into existing community mixed use areas. In the rezoning subsection, specifically looking at criteria as A, B, D, and F. A is the character of the neighborhood. The character of the neighborhood includes the residential mixture of the existing 1944 Miller House, the 1946 Nighthouse, and the 1960 duplex at the corner of Locust Street and Jefferson Parkway. It also includes the daily activities and services of the businesses in the area, which include the whistle-stop-ready-mix, I'm sorry, not stop, whistle-ready-mix, MFA Oil, Shelton's Contracting and Business and Storage Yard, and the dentistry located across the street. B, the extent of the, sorry, existing and any proposed zoning and uses of adjacent properties, and the extent to which the proposed use is compatible of adjacent zoning uses. The existing district is M2, which is not compatible with the existing residential uses. It was brought up during planning and zoning that these are legal nonconforming currently. The proposed additional residential house, though, would not fit within the M2 under our current regulations. The proposed rezoning of R1 is not compatible with the existing industrial and storage relay uses. However, all of these uses have been currently coexisting, and the applicants are requesting to rezone to an appropriate district for their existing use and the addition of one more single-family house, future lot splits being referenced there. Criteria D, the suitability of the property for uses to which it has been restricted under applicable zoning district regulations. Under the General Industrial M2 District, single-family residential is not a permitted use. Allowing the proposed rezoning to single-family residential R1 District will bring this property more into compliance with current zoning regulations and allow the property owners to be able to split the property and add another single-family house. Criteria F, the extent to which proposed use will seriously injure the appropriate use of or detrimentally affect neighboring property. The proposed use of single-family residential will not seriously injure or detrimentally affect the property, appropriate use of the neighboring property, as there are existing single-family residential that have been in place since the 1940s, and no known issues or concerns. At the May 15th Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission voted six to zero to recommend approval to the Board. Staff has recommended approval of proposed 1.5-acre rezon from General Industrial M2 District to Single Family R1 District.
All right. Thank you, Christina. Any questions for, from the Board, for Christina? All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here present this evening that wants to speak to this? Come on up, sir.
I'm at Miller, 403 Locust Street. I'm just here to get my property rezoned so I can build a new house.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. No other, no other participation, seeing none, seeing no questions from the Board. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and we will proceed with the first reading of Council Bill 21.
Council Bill 21, in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, approving a rezoning from General Industrial M2 District to Single Family Residential R1 District for 1.5 acres of land located at 403 Locust Street in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right. Thank you. And that'll come back again at our June 2nd Board meeting for the second reading. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing. I'm going to open up the public hearing on the final plat for Cedar Crossing, lots 1 through 53, and Track A, located south of Parkwood South and north of 267th Street. Christina?
So they're going to jump straight in after the proposal. We're going to kind of focus on what we have in front of us. September 19th, 2024, planning and zoning voted five to zero to recommend that the Board approve the rezon preliminary development plan that was before us, previous. It had eight conditions within the staff report. That was before the Board of Aldermen, October 7th of 2024, along with the preliminary plat. Both of those items were approved with, again, the eight conditions that were in the report. Those are referenced, the ordinance numbers within the staff report. On December 2nd, 2024, the Board of Aldermen. On December 2nd, 2024, the Board of Aldermen approved Resolution 2024-31, authorizing the city administrator to enter into a development agreement for Cedar Crossing Development between JWM Development LLC and Burkett Development LLC in the City of Harrisonville. That was completed and recorded March 20th, 2025. We had a little hiccup with needing to make sure we had all original signatures for the county, so that's why it took a little bit longer. So, it was recorded with them in book 5151 on page 92. Key issues related, the property's zoned RP1, planned single-family residential district. The preliminary plat, obviously, this is just a portion thereof. The preliminary plat was for 219 lots, 195 which were single-family and 24 duplex, with sidewalks proposed for all street, size of streets per code. Proposed final plat before us tonight has 27 lots located in the northern portion and 26 lots located in the southern portion, connected by the road over the dam, as was previously planned by city staff. Proposed layout is fairly consistent with that of the previously approved preliminary plats, of course, just for this portion. The city's 2040 Comfort Plan shows the property and surrounding areas suburban neighborhood, which allows for a mixture of housing types with an emphasis on high connectivity of new and established neighborhoods. So, within the analysis section, I hit briefly on sidewalk trails. One of the things we talked about playing zoning, the fact that the developers have expressed multiple times an interest in providing trails as requested, but have had a reluctance to provide details of when, where, and to what extent. Been asking for, hey, can you at least put a note on here saying something general about where they're going to be and within two years, three years, something that we have to go by? So, still hoping that that will come forward. Also hit within the analysis about the cash in lieu for parkland. This was part of the discussion during the preliminary plat. The developers had previously, sorry, the developers had agreed to take over maintenance of the parklands previously provided to the city for the parkland known as Height Park in exchange for the cash-in-lie payment for parkland being waived. Language regarding this exchange was included in the approved and recorded development agreements, and staff is going to continue to work with legal and the developers to make sure the land transfer is completed. Again, hitting on the comprehensive plan, this area shown as suburban neighborhood. This place type, the suburban neighborhood, includes residential areas established around a interconnected curvilinear street network. Several key priorities that are identified in that section of the comprehensive plan are important to this development, such as the modern housing types that are to serve a variety of lifestyle needs, the high interconnectivity where appropriate, and utilization of floodplain for open space and trailways. At the May 15th Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission voted six to zero to recommend approval to the board. I'm going to run through the recommendation items. There are a number. Some of these are generic things. Some of them are carryovers from the preliminary plats, and some of them were just additional details that we're trying to get nailed down. So, the 13 conditions of approval. One, correct building lines for lots 46 and 50 to be 30 feet adjacent to Juniper Street. Two, add signature blocks for Patty Hillbrand, P.E., Public Works Director, and Christine Stanton, AICP Community Development Director. Three, provide a copy of any covenants, conditions, and restrictions for the Homeowners Association. Four, current fire flow shall be performed by a reputable water purveyor. These should be per IFC, which is International Fire Code 2018, Appendix B, Section B 105.11. Number five, the plan should show hydrant locations per IFC 2018, Appendix C, Section 507. Number six, provide hydrant spacing per IFC 2018, Appendix C, Table C 102.1. Number seven, provide required access and loading per IFC, Appendix D, Section D 102.1. Number eight, the developer to pay $1,500 per street light. The developer shall provide and install the conduit and dig the trench. Public Works staff shall install the wire for the streetlights. Locations will be determined by Public Works staff. Number nine and number 10 are very closely related. Number nine comes from the preliminary plat. Trails shall be provided that connect to the sidewalk and connect the proposed and existing open space areas, including the Height Park properties, which obviously are not in this phase, but will be in future phases. Number 10 was the ask for a note to the plat that describes the general location and size of proposed parks, trails, or other public amenities, whether open to the general public or to be reserved by deed or covenant for the use of all property owners within the subdivision. Number 11, fee in lieu of stormwater detention facilities, sorry, fees for 2,300 per residential lot, development acre for the proposed 53 lots, 51.63 acres. This equates to 118,749 and will be due after final plat approval and prior to the issuance of any building permits. Number 12 is a repeat from the generic comments from our preliminary plats. The sidewalk shall have handicap access at all intersections in accordance with Section 410-530B and shall normally be separated from the edge of the street by a grassy strip 24 inches wide. Sidewalks shall comply with the ADA requirements in place at the time of construction, and all non-paved right-of-way shall either be sodded or seeded. That is all directly out of code. And number 13, also carried over from the preliminary plat, just making sure recovered, saying sewer and water mains shall be installed with 10 feet of separate separation and shall be located such that they are on different sides of the street. I know it's a lot of conditions. Like I said, some of those are generic. Some of those were fire comments. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions from the board for Christina? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing no one and no questions from the board, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll move along to the first reading of Council Bill 22.
In ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, approving a final plat for Cedar Crossing, lots 1 through 53, and Track A, located south of Parkwood South and north of 267th Street in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you. So, that was first reading. We'll bring that back for the second reading at our June 2nd meeting. All right, moving right along. Next up, we have a public hearing on rezoning of approximately 20.52 acres from single-family residential R1 District to non-retail business CO District located west of Jefferson Street, north of Locust Street, and Locust.
The applicant is seeking approval to rezone the 20.52 acres from single-family residential R1 District to the non-retail business CO District to allow the future Cass County Public Library and future duplexes. So, previous actions on this one include, it was originally annexed, the front portion in March 10th, 1965, the board approved that, and at that time, that frontage portion was established as residential district number two. August 6th, 1969, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance 833, declaring the results of a special annexation held July 22nd of 1969. This annexation included several tracts of land as well as the northern three-quarters of this property. And then September 20th of 1978, again, referencing that 1194 zoning ordinance. At that time, the area was established as low-density, single-family residential R1A District. May 13th of 1991, the Board of Aldermen approved a new zoning ordinance, 1825, which removed the R1A District and established present-day, single-family residential R1 District. On April 11th of this year, the minor plat, Locust Place, lots 1 and 2, was recorded with Cass County Recorder of Deeds by instrument 764544 and book 27 on page 26. Underneath the analysis section and the proposed sub, zoning subsection, again, there's a brief comparison between the dimensional standards of the R1 and the CO districts. In the comprehensive plan subsection, the area is identified as community mixed use. The community mixed use places are suburban hubs intended to accommodate daily needs for residents of the city. These places should be arranged to integrate a broad range of retail, service, office, and residential uses together in a town center format. The intended uses for this proposed rezoning have the potential to address all three of the key priorities that are listed in that section of the comp plan. One, integration of modernized and revamped residential uses into existing community mixed use areas if the future duplexes come forward. Two, integration of office employers and large-scale experiential destinations, movie theater, arcade, gaming complex, bowling alley. In my mind, I kind of think that library kind of goes a little bit with that, but I've been told that it's not quite the same. Three, improved pedestrian ADA and bicycle facilities for both access and circulation. So, those were the three key priorities which this potentially could hit on. The rezoning criteria subsection, we're looking at review criteria's A, B, C, E, M, and Q. A, of course, again, being the character of the neighborhood, and the overall character appears to be consistent with that of the shown on the comprehensive plan. It includes a mixture of offices, bank, salon, and apartments nearby. B, again, the existing and any proposed zoning and uses of adjacent properties and the extent to which the proposed use is compatible with the adjacent zoning and uses. The existing zoning right now, R1, which is not compatible with the existing offices and proposed future uses of a library and duplexes. However, the proposed zoning of CO is compatible with these uses. Subcriteria C, the extent to which the proposed use facilitates adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements. The availability of existing utilities and their capacities were discussed during the pre-application meeting. Normal fire flow tests will be required. Specifics for electricity will be addressed during the final development plan process, and staff is confident that the existing system will be able to handle the development with the, any upgrades that are required specifically for the development as it occurs. Safety concerns regarding traffic were discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and staff will require a traffic study with the final development plan to make sure that those concerns are addressed. Criteria E, the length of time, if any, the property has remained vacant. The property was annexed into the corporate limits of the city in the 1960s and has remained undeveloped since that time. Criteria M, the extent to which public facilities and services are available and adequate to meet the demand for facilities and services generated by the proposed use. The question of whether our public facilities and services are adequate to meet the demand generated by proposed use was brought to Public Works, and no concerns were raised. At this point, staff does not see any issues with existing system meeting the needs of proposed development with whatever requirements we see that has to happen as part of the development when we're going through that final development plan process. This was reviewed, of course, like I said earlier, during the pre-app meeting. Criteria Q, the consistency of the proposed use with the permitted uses and the uses subject to conditions in the district in which the proposed rezoning or special use is located. The proposed uses are consistent with the permitted uses for the district proposed and the surrounding properties. As there are, I will point out too, a note on the front that there is currently a C1 and a CO property adjacent to the proposed rezone. Either district would have been supported by staff, but to allow for the duplex use that the property owner wants to do in the future, staff has recommended the CO. At the May 15th Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission voted five to one to recommend approval to the Board of Aldermen. Staff recommends approval of the request of rezone of approximately 20.52 acres from single-family residential R1 District to non-retail business CO District with the following condition. A final development plan shall be submitted, reviewed, and approved prior to the issuance of any development-related building or infrastructure permits. I will add, one of the reasons it would be a final development plan is if they can meet all of our code requirements. Unlike some of our other peer communities, we are not a largely planned district community, although we do allow for planned districts. If this were a requirement that they could not meet code-wise, they would have to come back and ask a modification, do a preliminary development plan, or rezone to a code, to a planned district. The applicants had indicated they have no concern with, with meeting code requirements. Additionally, I did have a letter submitted last, I think this was just last week, that someone who owns a business in the area was concerned about whether this would affect their business. Their current tenant operates the Guns Gold and Pawn, Pawn Shop under special use permit. That operation will continue at least through their special use permit. Their special use permit would expire October 5th of 2027, at which time they have to come back through process and be reevaluated.
Thank you, Christina. Any questions for Christina on that?
Just, I just out of curiosity, there's no sidewalks along that side of the street, is there?
No.
Patty, do you recall that? So, we're wanting to put a library out there, but there's no access to it.
There's not on that side.
Yeah, not on that side. It's on the south.
Yeah. It's on the south side.
It's on the south side.
So, that would also have to be a requirement, I would assume?
Well, crosswalk.
But, I mean...
Didn't you read that in the requirements, or did I mishear that?
No. The, we do the final development plan review, and the code requires it for all residential, but with commercial, industrial type of developments, and I know this is not industrial, but it, it falls towards that. It's on a per-development basis, which obviously we would be looking at that and have to evaluate connections and how that fits what's before us. Obviously, we know the intended end users, but the decision before us tonight is the actual rezoning.
And those are things that, like we discussed at the zoning board, that would be addressed during their final plat and those types of things to address those.
During the final development plan, correct, sir?
Does everybody understand that, or have any questions?
It would have to be.
It would have to be. You get the sidewalks, crosswalks, and for a library.
Yep, but there, it's not going to go that far until it gets rezoned to, to even move forward with that, so that's really what we'd be voting for on that. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak on this? All right. Just give us your name and your address.
Steve Malinato, 2501 Burris Drive. The only thing I would ask is that ADA compliance and conveyance when it comes to there with, without, with us not having sidewalks on the south side or on the more northern portion of that, I would say that to, we might not be able to make it a requirement, but maybe there's some sort of contingency promise that they could be sure to add the crosswalk or the sidewalk, because I know it's not required to have it on both sides, but we are required to have that ADA conveyance. And so, there's, there's a lot of, it's a lot of citizens within our community that need that type of, that need that care and need that conveyance. So, I would ask that we at least address it in such a way that there is a future development or future promise in order to work towards that end.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
As you before, thanks. Yep. Sir, anybody else? All right, seeing none, seeing no more questions, I'm going to close the public hearing on that. And we will move on to Council Bill, the first reading of Council Bill 23.
In ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, approving a rezoning from single-family residential R1 District to non-retail business C-0 District for approximately 20.52 acres of land located west of Jefferson Street, north of Locust Street, and Locust Terrace in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you. And that'll come back again at our June 2nd meeting for the second reading. All right, next up, we, I'm going to open a public hearing on the final plat for Burris Ridge, fourth plat, lots 1 through 76. Christina, I think you're back up again.
Okay, so, again, this is the final plat, fourth plat, lots 1 through 76. I'm going to kind of jump through some of these pieces. Under the previous action, section, I'm not going to go on over the earlier history. I'm just going to focus on the last couple of years since this development has a lot of history to it, although all the history is available within the staff report. We'll start with April 20th, 2023. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a vote of six to one of the Burris Ridge Fourth preliminary plat, as was proposed at that time. May 1st of 2023, the Board of Aldermen approved Resolution 2023-18, approving preliminary plat of Burris Ridge Fourth plat, lots 1 through 77. Approval was contingent upon compliance with zoning and subdivision regulations, more specifically, the provision of a second point of ingress egress to the subdivision from Mechanic, Missouri 7 Highway. Mechanic, Missouri 7 Highway. March 12th, 2024, staff held a pre-app meeting with Mr. Mark Cook to review the next steps and what would be required for the final plat process. April 9th of 2024, application FP 24001 for final plat for Burris Ridge Fourth was submitted for review. Corrections were sent out and made. The item was scheduled for the May 16th, 2024 Plaine Zoning Commission, and the May 20th, 2024 Board of Alder meeting, meeting for public hearing. However, on May 7th of last year, we received an email stating that the applicant would like to respectfully remove Burris Ridge Fourth from considerations for approval of the board at the time, which meant that the item never came before the Plaine Zoning Commission previous, and a new final plat was required to be submitted prior to March 1st, sorry, not March, May 1st of this year, or the approved preliminary plat would have expired. Well, so on April 23rd, 2025, Mr. Mark Cook submitted a new application for final plat, FP 25002, which is before us tonight, Burris Ridge Fourth, lots 1 through 76. The applicant stated that the final plat itself had not changed from our previous corrections we had last year, which is why the attached final plat exhibit is dated from 2024. So under the key issue section, it stated there were 186 total lots originally. There are currently approximately 66 lots that are platted after several lot combinations and lot line adjustments that have been done over the years. With the planned 76 lots from this final phase of the development, the total number of lots planned are approximately 142, 44 lots, less lots than the original plan. There are currently 63 lots that have issued building permits, according to fire code as detailed in the analysis below in the staff report. A second point of access should have been provided at 30. The overall development meets or exceeds all the other requirements that are applicable to a final plat. The second access is being provided in the proposed plat, but I'm going to kind of step over that a little bit, because there was, in the analysis section, a detailed overview of the number of lots and changes in the zoning that happened over the years as well. A key statement, though, from that section is that both portions of the development already developed and the proposed fourth plat have less than were originally planned for this development, and the lots have been enlarged to better cater to the housing market. The overall street network of the development is largely the same as was originally planned, except that the area that the previous, the original preliminary plat cul-de-sacs of Roanoke Drive and Durham Circle have been reconfigured. Ladies Lane is located further east, and the access to the north is no longer part of the overall plan. So access is also discussed in greater detail, and we discussed that previously in the preliminary plat presentations in 2023. The Burris Ridge development was originally approved with two points of access, the primary point of ingress egress to, to and from the subdivision being Burris Drive. The original preliminary plat contemplated a second point of access to the north, however, the original developers of Burris Ridge Development did not own the property to the north, and staff could not ever find any sort of easement or agreement for any future right-of-way that went through that property, nothing was ever recorded. So this kind of gets back into the section requirements for that second access. So the second point of access, like I mentioned, has been provided on the proposed final plat. This added access point has resulted in one less lot than was shown on the preliminary plat for this phase that we looked at in 2023. Staff also discussed in the section about the HOA. Staff has found it appears that the original developer, Eternal Investments LLC, recorded a declaration of coven, protective covenants and restrictions for Burris Ridge subdivision lots 25 through 186, located in Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri, on December 14th, 2006, and that, of course, was based on the original preliminary plat that had the 186 lots. They also reported bylaws of Burris Ridge Homeowners Association on December 19th, 2006. However, it does not appear that the association was ever set up through the Secretary of State. On October 8th, 2019, Burris Ridge LLC amended the original covenants and restrictions for Burris Ridge. However, as I stated, there is no Burris Ridge Homeowners Association registered with the Secretary of State. Burris Ridge LLC is registered, and the amendments for the covenants reference homeowners that no longer live there, and again, also, the Burris Ridge LLC no, no longer owns any of the lots. But it is also interesting to point out that the landscaped island, tract A, which is located in Burris Drive, is shown to be owned by Burris Ridge Homeowners Association, but as I mentioned, said association does not appear to actually exist with the Secretary of State. Considering that there is an existing tract A, the island, with landscaping signage that is currently owned by a non-existing entity, staff would be supportive of the developer utilizing his votes and working with the residents of the Burris Ridge Development to register the HOA and include the management of the existing landscaping signage and pond within their duties. The final subsection underneath the analysis gets into the access to parks. This section briefly mentions a developer has agreed to provide access to the pond and trail, but is still working to determine where the best location for access is, and has stated this may be provided via easement recorded by a separate document. There's a procedure section that primarily deals with planning and zoning, but that had some of a review criteria for that in there, I'm going to kind of jump past that for a minute and go. Planning and zoning's recommendation on May 15th was six to zero to recommend approval to the board with the conditions listed in staff's report, as well as four other conditions pertaining to stormwater, sidewalks, approved permit for MODOT for second entrance and access to the pond, so we'll get into those in just a minute. I'm going to read through all the conditions of approval. Staff, again, recommending approval, subject to conditions 1 through 6. One, the access point, Rally Drive onto Mechanic Street, Missouri 7 Highway, shall first, shall be installed first as a construction entrance to minimize the impact of construction trucks and equipment upon the existing neighborhood. Two, street name Lady Lane needs to be corrected to Ladies Lane to match the previously platted street name. Additionally, Lady Court shall be corrected to Ladies Court. Three, and these are the conditions now that came out of public, of Planning Commission, and we had to have some additional discussion to fine-tune, because that was a little bit vague on some of the points. Three, a stormwater management plan and stormwater pollution prevention plan shall be provided in accordance with Article 2 of Chapter 415, per APWA, for this phase of development. Four, the developer shall connect all future sidewalks to the existing sidewalk network. Five, the developer shall provide a copy of the current approved permit for MODOT for the act, second access onto Mechanic Street, Missouri 7 Highway. And six, the final plat shall be revised to show public access is being provided to the pond, park, and trails. Trying to fill, like, what else I may have left off? I know there was a lot of discussion at planning and zoning.
I think you hit the four key areas that the zoning board recommended in there, so I know that, but yeah, there was a lot of discussion there. Any questions from the board for Christina on this?
Was there any discussion at the hearing about utilities, water, and those sorts of things? I mean, we've had some issues with water pressure there, I know we want to build a new water tower someday, but was there any discussion about that?
Not at planning and zoning. Patty, I don't know if you have anything else to chime in related to that topic?
No, we're, we're aware of the water pressure issue and have some strategies. Water tower is the most expensive option. We have a few others that aren't quite as expensive, so we're looking at those.
But these additional lots could be served by our existing system, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, I'll do my turn.
On the one plot map in here, it doesn't show, it doesn't show the second entrance?
It does on the last one.
Yeah, it should.
It doesn't, and I'm the wrong one.
It may not be on the right one, it's on the final plat map. Page 79.
Okay. There it is. That's on the wrong one.
Yeah, 79.
And then the construction going on right now, that's still the last phase, right? And then, so, but this new entrance has to be put in before we start building on the next phase?
That is the recommendation. We had a lot of concerns for heavy construction coming in and tearing up existing infrastructure, existing roads.
Right. Well, I was there in our city road groves, I was out that way and stuff, and visited some of the homeowners, and they were upset and mad that the current dump truck that was hauling dirt in and out was speeding up and down the road a lot, and I just really turned the roads.
Okay. Hold, hold up, hold up, stop, stop, stop. We're, I'll get, I'll get to the public here in a second, okay? You guys can talk. Thank you, sir.
But, I mean, but the, the dump truck was running up and down the road and stuff, and really turned streets, and, I mean, the kids in the area and people groves, I mean, and I was, I seen him run up and down the road a few times, and he was going kind of fast, so.
Okay.
But I just, this new entrance, I think would keep the traffic off, I mean, I would say it may be built first.
And that is one of the requirements in there? Yes. Okay. Any other questions?
The other thing I did want to point out is that we do have an additional attachment in this board packet that was not in the Plaine zoning packet, that is the memorandum of understanding that the developer had put together with conversations from city staff that we do need to discuss as well.
Has that been executed?
And so that's packet pages 80 and 81. I'm not sure if I'm necessarily the best person to speak to that, since a lot of that is under the Public Works Division, but it kind of lays out the developer's understanding, and I think some of his requests for waivers of fees or percentage and stuff, he may be able to speak to that more as well.
Okay. Yes.
I guess, so my question is, we talked about their benefit in the, the second entrance for construction, but we also, if I'm, if I am correct, we have an ordinance that states more than 50 homes, there has to be an additional entrance, so before...
Yeah, this will become the second entrance. We're just trying, we're just saying, we think it's a better idea for them to put it in upfront and use that as a construction interest.
Right. No, and I agree 100%. I just, the way we are stating it, to me, sounds like it's, okay, well, you're going to get your construction entrance first, but then we're going to talk about whether it has to be the full-blown entrance to go in, is that not correct?
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, and that's on record.
No, that's good, yep. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, Christina. I wouldn't go far, because I'm sure you're going to have some more. So this is a public hearing, so we will open it up to the public now. Anybody that would like to speak on this? All right. And, yep, as you come up, just give us your name and address.
Hi there, Mike Dale, 2111 Burris Drive, Harrisonville, Missouri. My biggest concerns are that, I, I don't know how all this works, but it seems like in Burris Ridge, we've put the cart before the horse several times. We come in, bulldoze a bunch of stuff, knock down trees, and then nothing happens. My biggest concern is that the next piece of construction equipment that comes into our neighborhood is an asphalt crew. The road needs to be next, not somebody cultivating dirt, not somebody hauling in rock, hauling out rock, asphalt crew. We've got nurses down Burris Drive that sleep during the day. You don't sleep much when you hear boom, 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 all the way down the road. It's, it's miserable. And I'll keep it short and sweet, I have zero interest in an HOA. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. And we've got, I think we had a couple other people, come on up, sir, again, just give us your name and address.
Steve Maldonado, 2501 Burris Drive. I'll lead off with I have zero interest with an HOA as well. Also, with, with respect to access to the park, the trail, and the pond there, it was brought to my attention that one of the, one of the ideas to, one of the ideas to, to give that access is to put a general use easement in between two lots. And so I think the thought of your number one plan is to inconvenience the two poor saps that buy those lots. I think that's, I think we can do better than that. I would think that maybe, since it's a trail, we can add that sidewalk and normal right-of-way maintenance rules should apply there, you know, infrastructure for the, with, with the vegetation maintenance and restoration there. So I, I think from, from the road to the, the public road to the public trail, I feel like we should have a public sidewalk with a normal right-of-way, the, the adjacent properties, just take care of the, of the grass right then and there. I think that's a more equitable solution for that portion right there. Additionally, if, we, we do definitely need a road there, and if we're going to maintain that second ease, or that setting ingress and egress for the construction, then it makes sense that, you know, eventually, we, we need, we need a new road there, that, that infrastructure is starting to fail significantly. I know you guys came through and did some crack filling, and I appreciate that you guys are trying to maintain that, but if you look from storm, storm structure to storm structure, those cracks are, 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 you can, you can measure them by the inches now. So there's a lot, there's a lot of infrastructure failures that are in the beginning stages that I think if we can do a partial and full-depth patching, and then come through and, and overlay all that, we, if we get to it now, it's going to be less costly if we do it now. So that's provided that we maintain that other access as, as the construction entrance, so those heavy equipments are not going to go over the road that we just freshly paved. So there's that. And then my other concern is, we have that road right there, we have, it's going into nothing, we don't have any sidewalks connecting us back to the city from the seven, so there's no ADA there in that, that grade. There's a, there's going to be a very steep percent grade, so that stormwater management plan and doing that stormwater study to see, to see where that water is actually going to go and how we're going to capture it, that's, that's important to me. To include where we put it in Marvin Court, right now, that my, my house is right there on that lot in that corner. I have a shop in the back, when that road goes in, my intention is to connect it and have a driveway right there, and if we have a steep, if we have a steep grade there, and depending on where the structures are going to get placed, based off that stormwater management plan, a lot of that water will be able to overtake and then flood out my shop, don't want that to happen, so I just want to make sure that when we go to develop this, that eventually I'm not going to get flooded out. So I'm sure I have more, but I can't remember off the top of my head, so I'll go ahead and end it there.
All right. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Yep.
Hello, my name is Adam Brule, I'm at 2405 Burris Drive, I'm going to tag team on my, my neighbor, and I had put it in the Facebook page unofficially to try to help prime some of the members of the, of the, the board today, but when we're talking about access to the pond, there is a good example of an existing structure that it's already been, and I don't know if it was built by the city, but Wild Trail that's behind the vocational school, that, yeah, that goes Thunderbird, and then it accesses to the gravel trail, which goes into the Monday Mile Trail. And what it appears like from unofficial plotting on OnX, it looks like it's actually sitting at, it must have been an easement, because it's sitting on somebody's property, there wasn't a separate boundary that, that I could see, but, I mean, it, it's been done before. I believe that, that if you're going to ask the builder, I guess we should be talking to the voting members here, but with reinforcement, if you're going to have the builder come in and be building houses, 30, 40, 50, or not 30, 40, 50, 300, 400, $500 homes in an area and require sidewalks, we, we would hope that this... we, we would hope that this access back to the city park would be sidewalk, would be a concrete structure that would be connected to the sidewalk to at least get past those homeowners' property lines. Once you hit the property line, there'll still be some distance before they get to the existing trail, and if they wanted to do that in gravel to blend in. But we were hoping for some type of solution like that. The other question, and it, because I don't know if that is going into the recommendation to the builder, I'm much like the others, I'm a no on HOA. The reason why I bought my, my house where it is is because there wasn't an HOA, there wasn't needed restrictions. And I'm a responsible neighbor and I ensured that I read the, the ordinances within the city, which read like a homeowners association restrictions. I mean, the city itself will keep itself at a good level. Understanding, planning and controlling of the sizes of houses, don't fall under that. But the, where's it going? HOH, oh, yeah. They were saying that they're recommending the HOA to maintain the signage and the accessway and the pond. Okay, so at the last meeting, I thought that it was, that it was brought up that the pond does not belong to the Burris Ridge. It belongs to the city park. We don't have a responsibility to maintain the pond. And I don't, definitely wouldn't, well, let me back up again. I have, since that meeting though, heard rumors that the city or parks commission has offered to give the pond to the developer. I would hope that you do not do that because I don't, unless the new developer is gonna force covenants and an HOA somehow on this new plot, I don't know how they're gonna take care of it. So considerations to keep in mind, I, with concerns on my part and I think some of my other neighbors. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Sorry, if you had any questions, let me back up. Didn't wanna be so rude.
Nope, you're good. Thank you, sir.
My name is Randy Coburn. I live at twenty-three oh two Burris Drive. We've lived there about five years. I've lived in the city of Harrisonville since like nineteen seventy-six, grew up here, graduated from Harrisonville. And I've seen the way that Harrisonville has built and just slowly degraded. It just seems like there's nothing new around this town. And then we, we, we get like a new housing addition. And this was like my end game was to move out into this beautiful addition out there. And now, when we signed our deed to the house, there was nothing disclosed that there was no covenants, HOA or any of that business. Or I would have never bought in out there. I'm a responsible homeowner. Everyone else that lives out in that subdivision is a responsible homeowner. We try to, you know, respect everybody. And it's like I told Alderman Chaney walking in here, it's like walking into a root canal. And he made the comment, well, I'm an American citizen. So am I. I served six years in the United States Navy. And to hear that now the city, the developer, whoever's building this out here, have we heard from him? I haven't heard anything from the developer, the builder. It's like everything that's being discussed tonight is just speculation. Oh, we're gonna get another street. You know, I've seen how the city works. I wanna hear from the builder. What's, what's gonna actually happen? You know, is there gonna be another seventy-six thousand? And then this deal with this pond out there. So is it the city gonna institute an HOA on us to make us responsible for taking care of something that's part of the city parks? I mean, what is our breaking point? I mean, you're all affected by taxes, price of groceries, fuel. You know, I wanna hear from the builder. We haven't even, I mean, this is a discussion with, with just the residents. Well, I haven't even heard from the builder what's gonna happen. So it's, it's just like I'm, I'm just, I'm just hearing speculation and conjecture. You know, I, I'm the guy that the rubber meets the road. That's what, that's how I deal. I mean, Larry, you live out there. When we moved out there, there were, we were told there were no covenants. We lived there a week and I had a, a trailer that I used to move my family in there with. My dad, he's eighty-eight. Morris Coburn, he was an alderman on this board for years. And then, you know, I know how the city works. And I had a trailer that I was using to move stuff and I left my trash can out one week and I got a letter from two, two guys that thought they ran that out there. I got a letter telling me, you can't have a trash can outside and that trailer, you can't leave that trailer out there. Oh, it's in the covenants. And we weren't told there was any covenants. I invited those two guys up to my house and they showed up with twenty-one pages of paper. The covenants, they said, they were covenants. You can't do this and that. Since then, since our neighborhood has developed and built up, those two individuals have moved because they couldn't enforce the covenants. So it's like, who do I believe anymore? You know, I want someone to look up to, someone that I can trust and listen to. And it's like, I'm not, it's, I'm not getting any information from anybody. I mean, this is the city. I'm, you know, a guy's just at his wit's end.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying, Randy. You know, there were, there are, there were covenants. One of the problems we've had with this subdivision, it's gone through several owners and through a bankruptcy. And, you know, when you have, I mean, we thought we had an HOA, you know, but as Christina said, it was, never was registered with the state, so maybe it wasn't legal. But the, you know, I've talked to several people about the covenants that we, that we thought we had out there, so, and I've, I've got a copy of them. I've had it for years. But, so what, what, what would you like to see?
Well, I, my major moot point is like all the other residents. I mean, with all the heavy building that's gonna be going on, I've been listening to the discussion and the, and the, the people that there's gonna be another street built for the primary construction. That Burris Drive will not be used any further for any kind of heavy construction outfits. And then it seems like this pond is a major contention. No one wants responsibility for it. So let's, let's force it, let's force an HOA on the residents out there and they can pay for that. And, and in a city council meeting, someone will come up with the idea, oh, that pond needs to be dredged. We need to get it fixed. So all the residents out there need to pay to have that done. And then we're all gonna be digging in our pockets to fix that. And then this walking trail, I, you know, I understand what everybody's talking about that, but it's like this whole HOA thing. I mean, how many HOAs are in, in Harrisonville right now? Can, can anybody tell me that? How many are in, in Harrisonville? Would we, would we be the first one?
No.
And, and what's the total amount of houses that are gonna be built out there? A hundred and, a hundred and what? And what, what's the average HOA dues? Two hundred, three hundred? So we're talking to like twenty thousand dollars, you know?
Well, we have those two landscape entrances at Burris and Mechanic Street. And those are being maintained now just on a volunteer basis, as I understand it. Is that right? Without, without an HOA.
The one landscape, well, the one at the top of the street and then the one that, the island down there.
The island also.
So we're, the city wants to establish an HOA on us to, to tax us to take care of those two, those two poster boards?
So HOA, the city can't, the city cannot establish an HOA. The city cannot, the city cannot enforce CCRs of any HOA.
Okay, the city can't do that. So then you're recommending that the.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, excuse me. Let him, let him finish talking.
You gotta listen. So the only way that an HOA can be enforced is by the HOA members themselves. City cannot do that. If someone wanted to say, someone's not following the CCRs of an HOA and come to the city, the city would say, I'm sorry, that is not a city function for us to enforce. The only thing that has been discussed with the HOA is you have current property that has been beaded to an HOA that has landscaping that is a voluntary basis that's going on. In those discussions, we've also had many residents in Burris Ridge complain to the city that there are people walking to the pond, walking across their yards, walking and doing accesses down through there. The, the city can't stop that because it's public property. If someone has public property, they can walk right through there and they can access those public fields because it's, it's open. It's not private. So therefore, the city said to the developer, that I can tell you, the developer has no desire to create an HOA. But we had mentioned to them, if this goes forward, we need to figure out something with that, at least the landscaping. And we do have residents complaining that there are people going down to this pond and to, toward this trail. So maybe if we have, if there's some kind of HOA, that could belong to the actual Burris Ridge development and therefore there could be no public residence. Because as long as it's public, people from Pleasant Hill, people from Peculiar, people from Belton, anyone could come walking down through there because it's a public asset. So the discussion came to the developer, would he be willing to do that? He said, I'm not gonna create it, but if the residents want that, I won't fight that. So that's the only thing that's been discussed, is you do have property right now that's being maintained by volunteers. If those volunteers say, I ain't doing it anymore, guess who's gonna get the calls? It's gonna be the city. And there's not gonna be anybody that can be enforced on it because there's no existing HOA. And the city's not gonna maintain it because we don't maintain anybody else's entry to the development. And so that was a, tried a happy medium to deal with the complaints that are going on in Burris Ridge about people walking through their yards and walking down through there. Because once that gets finished, we're gonna have a lot more people walking through there. If it stays a pit, a, a city pond and a city trail, anybody can walk through there. They can park, they can do whatever they want, and the city cannot tell them no. You, and then the residents are gonna be even up more upset because they got a lot more people that are coming down through there. So that's the only reason the discussion about the pond even came up, is to try to deal with people concerned about the public and anybody all time, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day can walk through there and walk by their houses and do all this, and that was the concern. But we still do have a problem.
I can, I can understand that there's gonna be a trail and, and how you've laid it out, you know. The statement that people are walking through people's yards. I mean, as a grown adult, I don't, I don't walk through people's yards. I mean, you know what boundaries are. We all know boundaries.
Unfortunately, we deal with a lot of people that don't know boundaries.
And I can tell, speak for that, and I can speak for that for myself. Where I live in the Thunderbird Estates, there are people that walk, I have an acre and a half lot. There are people that walk right next to my house as if there's no boundaries. So it's gonna have, and I'm, I agree. People should know and they should be taught boundaries.
We look at, just to try to protect the residents that were complaining about the traffic of people that were coming down through there. But we do, part of this problem is, it's a development that started twenty years ago. It's went through several different hands. So it's trying to make lemonade out of lemons.
At what, at what point are we gonna be able to hear from the builder how this is all gonna transition? I mean, the, the, the nuts and the bolts of it all. At the last meeting, was anyone present to, on, on the behalf of the builder to, to talk? I mean, has he even been here yet?
Yeah, the builder's.
I'm sorry, I gotta, Mayor, I'm sorry, I gotta cut it. This is, this has turned into a question and answer. We don't allow anyone to do question and answer with the city. This is an opportunity for this gentleman to share his thoughts with the board, for the board to hear them. And then for anyone else, whoever's next up to speak, the city has more business to handle and we just really can't do back and forth like this.
Okay, well, I'll leave it fact that I stand against an HOA.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else out there that would like to?
Sir, may I, may I approach again?
Sure. Come on up.
Respectfully, sir, city administrator, I reject that, I reject that premise that it's, it's, folks are complaining about just randomly gaining access to the pond. Folks are complaining that we're utilizing private property to gain access to that pond. And so that's why when I, when I proposed, when I, that we do not use a general access easement to, to achieve that end. And so that's what folks are complaining about. And we live in America. We have freedom of movement. It's a constitutionally protected right. A public road to, a, 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 a public infrastructure to public infrastructure, if we connect that with public, of course, that, that's public. I get that. I'm a minority in this thought process, but if we have public infrastructure and other public infrastructure and you got, you know, fifty, a hundred feet in order to connect those two, connecting that with an HOA easement or, or an HOA-controlled area, doesn't make sense to me. Public to public, if someone from a different town wants to visit that public pond, that's their right. I'm okay with that. You know, we've, we, you know, a lot of people fight and died for that flag in order to protect that right for folks, and that's okay. So I just wanted to make sure that that got put on record. We're, we're not, we're not complaining that people are accessing it all hours of night and being crazy, but we're, we're, we're just, there's folks that have private property that want their property respected. And I just wanna make sure that if we move forward, we don't continue that in and create some sort of general access easement that perpetuates the same issue. That's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Yes, sir. Come on up. Yep, give us your name and address. Yep.
Joe McGee, two-one-one-five Richmond Drive. I'm in the neighborhood. I agree with much of what is said here, especially the whole second access is an absolute must. The fact that we haven't had it already when we are twice as far in the amount of building permits that have been issued is, honestly, it's unacceptable to me. It may not have been a, an emergency situation, but there was one time where new builders had cut a gas line and I was not allowed to leave the neighborhood because I'm down all the way at the bottom of the neighborhood. EMS staff was there, so if I had had a heart attack or something, maybe they would have been able to take care of me or whatever, but my daughter had to miss a job interview. It's very frustrating. So second entrance is an absolute must. Access to the pond, so my property is right up next to the pond. And it's also a very convenient way to get to the trail because people can hop over a small little creek area and get right to it. So I have people, especially for the last four and a half years, consistently cutting through my private property, as you mentioned. Very frustrating. I have private property signs up and it still happens. So having access to that pond, I believe, is very important, but I would also like to not have it tied to an HOA or anything else. I believe in freedom of movement. I personally do not mind at all if somebody would use that city trail that is public, use the city pond that's public and use that public sidewalk to go into the public street or sidewalks of our neighborhood. That is their right. Now, obviously, if they are impeding on my property or anyone else's, I have a problem with that and police or anyone else will deal with that. That's fine. But I do not want it tied privately to our neighborhood or gated or anything else. Let me see. And then I also moved in to the neighborhood very much opposed to an HOA and I continue to be opposed. Thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. All right, anybody else before I close? Any questions from the board? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing on that. Thank you, everybody, for your participation in that. And we will move on to the first reading of Council Bill twenty-four.
Council Bill twenty-four.
I'm sorry, hold up. Alex. I'm sorry, hold up, Alex, I'm sorry.
I, I mean, I'm listening to all this, I'm familiar with Burris Ridge, but I've not been back in it where the pond's at and everything else, and everybody's talking about. They're talking about walking through private property, is there, is there an access right now to get to that pond? Okay, so that's the first thing, the second thing is, if people are gonna be going there, where are they gonna be parking? They're gonna be parking in front of residences.
Public, public street.
It, that, well, they can, they can park, they can park in front of people's residences, and that's true, but it's gonna still be a problem, we're gonna get complaints about it. And so, um, I wish I'd known more about the access to the pond, 'cause I'm not familiar with that, but I think there are some things that we need to look at, obviously.
The only public asset right now is the trail from the city park, walk, draw it down.
Right, but it doesn't come through Burris Ridge to go to the, to the pond.
No, just from the park to the pond, and then people in Burris Ridge, wherever it's walking through private property-
Right. And they're gonna continue to do that. Where I live, I live in a totally residential area, and people walk from our street, which is a one-block street, to apartments behind us. So people do it all the time, and it's frustrating, and I understand that. So, anyway, thanks for clarifying that, 'cause I'm gonna make sure I understood what we're talking about.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay. And, all right, Alex, we're ready for the first reading there.
All right, Council Bill twenty-four, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville approving a final plat for Burris Ridge, fourth lot, fourth plat, lots one through seventy-six, located south of Burris Drive and west of Mechanic Street, Mo Seven Highway, in the city of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you, and that'll come back June second, at that meeting for the second reading and vote. All right, next up, we have another public hearing on the vacation of a fifteen-foot-wide alley right-of-way located north of North Street within Lot Two, original town of Harrisonville. And I'll move into that public hearing, and I think we're back to you, right, Christina?
So the applicant's requesting vacation of a fifteen-foot-wide, unimproved alley right-of-way located on, within Lot Two, formerly blocks one-fifty-five, one-fifty, and one-forty-six, original town of Harrisonville. The alley right-of-way to be vacated runs east and west within said Lot Two, except the portion where it crosses the easternmost fifteen-foot-wide right-of-way, which runs north and south within that property, formerly in between blocks one-fifty and one-forty-six. So previous actions related to this item, March first, eighteen-eighty-eight was the original town of Harrisonville, plat was recorded with the county. The nineteen-twelve Height and Associates land title map of the city of Harrisonville was reported at that time, showing references to platted properties, including Dutros Edition, this platted located in the north of the subject property. Properties immediately to the north of the subject property also include blocks twenty-two and twenty-three from the east to west respectively. September ten, twenty-twenty-four, minor plat for lots one and two, original town of Harrisonville, was recorded with the Cass County Recorder of Deeds Office by instrument number seven-five-five-zero-one-five and book twenty-six on page eighty-six. Previous at that time, we had done a vacation of some of the right-of-way for what became Lot One, for building to happen there, so this is the Lot Two now, so they wanna be able to build on it. So key issues, again, it's a fifteen-foot-wide alley that is unimproved, that was dedicated as part of the original town, Harrisonville Platte, stated never constructed, and it's a potential impediment to the construction of housing on this lot. The, again, that fifteen-foot easternmost wide right-of-way for alley, and also unimproved, that runs north-south, is being maintained, city utilities are located within that right-of-way, so that's why that portion's not being vacated. No objections have been received, and actually, there is a, an email of support for the, of the request of vacation included within the packet. Staff recommends approval of the request of vacation of a fifteen-foot-wide, unimproved alley located north of North Street within Lot Two, original town of Harrisonville, as depicted in the exhibit.
So the access to this is, I don't, can't see what the name of this street is, that cuts in from Independence Street.
North Street.
That's North Street, and that would be the access if they, if they were to develop?
Did you finish, Christina? Were you finished reporting on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing, is there anybody here present that would like to speak on that? All right, seeing none, seeing no more questions, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we will move to the first reading of Council Bill twenty-five.
Council Bill twenty-five, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, vacating a fifteen-foot-wide alley right-of-way running east and west within Lot Two, original town of Harrisonville, and establishing an effective date.
All right, thank you, and that'll come back again to our June second board meeting for the second reading. All right, now we're moving on, last item on our agenda here this evening, this here is Council Bill twenty-six.
Pardon me, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, amending section one-ten-one-ninety-seven of the Harrisonville City Code of Ordinances to change the procedure and conditions for private citizens to address the Board of Aldermen.
Okay, so this is what I discussed earlier, what we had discussed in, in work session several meetings ago, the changing from three minutes to five minutes, so this is an administrative ordinance.
I made motion, we suspend rules, move to a second reading.
Second.
All right, I got a motion from Alderman Turner, with a second from Alderman Davidson, to suspend rules on Council Bill twenty-six and move it to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Fauch?
Aye.
Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
All right, thank you, second reading?
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, amending section one-ten dot one-ninety-seven of the Harrisonville City Code of Ordinances to change the procedure and conditions for private citizens to address the Board of Aldermen.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Fauch?
Aye.
Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Council Bill twenty-six is now ordinance three-seven-two-four. We'll move on to Alderman and committee reports, we'll start with Alderman, let's go ahead and start with you, Alderman Mills, so I don't forget about you.
Well, keep it short, no report, Your Honor.
All right, thanks. Alderman Milner?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
All right, Alderman Dorhoff?
I'll continue the trend, nothing this evening.
Alderman Fauch?
I just wanna congratulate Officer Michelson again on his Officer of the Year, and besides all the stuff that you heard about him, he, he's been going around talking to civic groups about scams and how to avoid them and things like that, so we appreciate that. And as far as, I do appreciate the Public Works Department coming out to Burris Ridge and working on the, the street, I've been after people here at City Hall for quite a while on that, and, and my understanding is that the patchwork that's going on now is an interim measure, and that eventually they will come back and actually cut out those areas and fill them with, I'm not sure what, but, so that street is gonna improve, and that's been on my list for a long time, so thanks for that.
Awesome, thank you, sir, Alderman Turner.
I just wanna say, thank you for, everyone that came out tonight and voiced their opinion, it's great, I mean, you guys gave up your night to come out and express your voice to be heard, and it's, it really helps us out a lot, thank you.
All right, thanks, Alderman Davidson.
I agree with Matt, I'm sorry, Officer, Alderman Turner, we appreciate you coming out, a lot of things that I was able to learn tonight, again, it's, we're here for the public, we've gotta make tough decisions sometimes, understandably, but it gives us the opportunity to understand where the public stands, and then it gives us the opportunity then to make the, hopefully, the proper decision that's right for everybody, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Alderman Franklin?
I just wanted to remind everybody that on Tuesday, June second, Parks and Rec, we're doing a customer appreciation day out at the dog park. Our fundraiser last year was for shade structures, and they won't be completed and up by then, so come on out and have some hot dogs and take a look around and see what's new and different out. I'm sorry, June third, I'm sorry, June third. And thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening as well, with the weather the way it's been, we appreciate hearing what you have to say and your side of the story as well, as I have.
Thank you, ma'am, Alderman Chaney?
I don't really have much, youth football is gearing up for this fall, sign-ups are available now, second through sixth grade, if anybody has a little football warrior, we could use them, that's it.
Awesome, thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have the report from the city administrator.
All right, groundbreaking for Comcast is going to be up in front of City Park there, May twenty-second at nine a.m., so that's this Thursday. The water treatment plant, Clarifier Domes, they are being, being shipped to us, and they should be in sometime in June, so you'll see that project out there at the water plant going on. South sewer lift stations are operational, I wanna give a shout-out to Matt Carver and the staff down there for all the hard work to get that getting to the point it is now, but we still got a little ways to go. Highway two, South Bridge over Muddy Creek Project, we have the open space information and TSEMA questioning the accuracy of the base flooded elevation of the project, and so the city engineer has it under review. South Commercial Street Extension Project, engineer submitted sixty, sixty percent opinion of construction cost for that project, and the city staff agree with that, additional amendment. Blueberry Park, we're working with the five residents there, and there'll be a legal description and, and track maps for those five property owners, and possible plat revision that might be required, once we get that completed. And then, working with MODOT on their forced main project, and have an MOU with them with staff, staff revisions, and then the twenty-twenty-five Asphalt and curb and gutter program is being currently put together to be put out for bid, and then the elimination of the existing railroad at the grade of Anaconda, submitting a grant for that project, as well as a project with MODOT for a grant for the sidewalk and railroad at crossing at Missouri Northern Arkansas Railroad along Commercial Street from West Wall to Industrial Drive, and so it would be, a grant would pay for that to be completed as well, so we've turned in for both of those. For the electric, getting tested even a little more tonight, if you have not seen, please use that Hometown Grid, that's a quick way to get access and to get communication back and forth between the city on any type of power outages. The Police Department received a grant from the Missouri Department of Transportation and Safety, using, utilizing that for speed detect, speed detection signs, and then they also received another ten-thousand-dollar grant to purchase additional equipment, and we listed out some of that equipment for you all to see. Parks and Rec, they started the gel coating and completed that at the Aquatic Center, Rural Construction was out there to paint and do some additional maintenance, and the pool is now full. Staff has been involved, as Alderman Franklin pointed out, with the new dog shade, and then the new Eagle Scout project out there, the Gaga ball pit, but you know, I had to learn what a Gaga ball pit was, at Camp Breeder, and then staff's still working with the beautification program, we had three submissions on that, and one is recently sold their home, one was approved, and then one obtained, obtained an additional information from the, the third person there. A lot of those projects, as well as the additional projects, that are moving forward for the Ash Street Project, July seventh, as well as the Bechardite Project, or not, James the Blueberry Project, that will start on July the seventh as well, on those stormwater projects. With that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. April twenty-twenty-five Municipal Court Report was in your packets there, I will ask that keep in your, keeping your prayers, the family of Jerry Fornell, he served as a city prosecutor since September, unexpectedly passed away, so keep them in your prayers. All right, questions from the media? Nothing, thank you for being here, sir. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion to?
Motion from Alderman Davidson?
Second.
Second from Alderman Dorhoff, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, we're gonna take about ten, fifteen minutes, and then we're gonna jump into the work session.